You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next, the October 1st meeting of the Michigan City Economic Council. You can get more information for this meeting by going to www dot access laporte county dot org.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 1st, 2024 council meeting. I am Tracy Tillman, and I am Vice President, filling in for President Don Priszbalinski. I ask if you will all please silence your electronic devices, and would you all please stand in the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silent prayer? Let me give you drinks to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under back, individual with liberty. Ms. Nilup, if you would please, on roll call.
Mr. Beatery.
Present.
Mr. Coulter.
Present.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Dr. Cora.
Present.
Ms. Lee.
Present.
Ms. Molinar.
Present.
Mr. Nelson. Mr. Priszbalinski and Ms. Tillman.
Present.
We have seven present and two absent.
And for the record, Mr. Nelson and Mr. Priszbalinski both acknowledged that they were gonna be absent on today's meeting. Onto approval of minutes from regular council hybrid Zoom, September 17th, 2024.
So moved.
I so moved. I'll second the motion.
That was motion by Dr. Cora and second by Ms. Molinar. Motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none, motion carries. Reports of standing committees, finance committee meeting. The Michigan City Finance did not have a meeting on today due to there were no claims to report. I would like to go over the City of Michigan City 2024 Riverboat Fund Statement of Cash Position. Fiscal year to date, October 1st, 2024, ending balance grand total $3,113,733.86. Also, on behalf of the City Finance Committee, we would like to make a recommendation to the council to accept the 2025 budget that has been presented and presented to us by the mayor, Angie Nelson Deitch.
Does it need a motion?
Yes.
A motion, motion to.
Thank you. There, there's a motion. Is there a second?
The recommendations from the finance.
Under finance. And would this need to be a unanimous or individual vote?
It's a, it's a recommendation.
A recommendation.
That the council adopts that recommendation or doesn't. Can you hear me now? Ah, there we go. So that it's a recommendation from a committee, and what the request is, is that the council as a whole adopt the recommendation of the finance committee. It doesn't need to be unanimous, but it does need a majority. You're not actually voting to adopt the budget either. It's just accepting the recommendation.
Are those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? There are none. The recommendation has been approved to be presented to the council. Moving on to reports from boards and commissions. Are there any reports from boards and commissions? There are none. Are there any reports of special or select committees? There are none. Reports from mayor or other city officers and departments. We have Chief Corley, Michigan City Police Department, that will be coming under department head. Also, he will be presenting a presentation during this time.
Thank you, Council Vice President in the council. Thanks for having us evening. Um, good evening, everybody. Um, first, I wanted to pass out your monthly stats, which I, again, fill in my promise of the first meeting of at least appearing in person or send them via email. Um, so I want to go over those. And then secondly, I would like to then go over the a brief PowerPoint presentation of what our crime suppression unit has done over the summer months. So, uh, the stats for the month of September, we have 3,461 calls for service, 375 reports taken. A total arrest of 191, 35, 36 of those are juveniles, 155 were adults. Total shots fired calls for the month of September were again 42. Um, Councilman Nelson's not here. I actually broke him down to district like he's been asking me the last several months. So as you can see, District 1 had 10 calls, District 2 had nine calls, District 3 had seven calls, District 4 has four calls, District 5 had three calls, and District 6 had nine calls. Out of those 42 calls, a lot of those, again, are things that we detected prior to being called. And again, some of them are um, our system hearing things that may sound similar to shots, but not always shots. Um, in that matter, uh, total firearms seized, we had 23, total speeding tickets, 131 with eight being citations, 123 being warnings, uh, warrants issued, 150 for the month of September. We served 110 of those. Um, 22 were recalled and total cleared for the month of September, 132 warrants. Um, our case reports referenced flock had total of 18, three of them referenced theft, two referenced stolen vehicles, which the vehicles recovered, two were stolen license plates, which they were recovered. One was unlawful carrying of a handgun, one was a fraud investigation, two were raven notifications where evidence was found of actual shots being fired or gunplay. One was a shooting investigation arrest. Um, one was a hit and run accident, two were warrant arrest, one was a resisting arrest, uh, incident, one was a missing person, and one was an accident report. Reference our activity for our social worker. Um, she had 56 total referrals, 54 of them were contacts. Um, two of them were referral sources, two came from reports, 42 from the Patrol Division, and 12 from outreach. Um, also referral types were five reference suicide ideation or attempts, uh, 23 reference mental health, two reference substance abuse overdose, um, two references wellness check, 18 reference juvenile issues or runaway, nine reference abuse or neglect, seventh reference homelessness or unstable housing, four reference aging or elderly, two reference protective order, three reference victims of crime. And that's it for the referral types. Um, and then resources provided. One was recovery supports, five were CMHC, which is a clinical mental health centers, right? Yeah, yeah. Crisis Mental Health Centers, I'm sorry. Um, number five is emergency department hospital. Um, one was from employment services and 10 from others, victim ranging from victims advocate, APS, family advocates, Health Link, and the MERC team. Do you like, if I can go into that presentation for any questions, and then we can kinda put them all together, or did you wanna question this and then?
Are there any, um, questions from the council for the chief? There are not.
Thank you. And so I wanted to give a brief presentation, uh, reference our crime suppression unit. As you know, our, our shots fired reports are down drastically. Um, the reports of shots fired violent crimes are down drastically, drastically within the city. And a lot of that is not just, it's all because of the men and women of police department, but we do have a special unit, a crime suppression unit that um, is full-time throughout the summer. We have, uh, three full-time members, um, and then we have part-time members throughout the department that comes out with them. As you can see, their special, what they are designed to do is to go out on the street level and look for those violent crimes like shots fired. Get guns, drugs, and money are their three goals on the street level. Um, they work hand in hand with our crime, with our LaPorte County Drug Task Force. Um, so it all comes into play. They get their, they get some tips from them, they send them tips and so forth. And so it helps them work better effectively on the street. Next slide. As you can see, this slide is reference our seized firearms, um, from 2018 to 2024. Um, as you can see, it, the seizure of firearms goes up throughout those years. A lot of that is due to our crime suppression unit. Next line. Um, and as you can see, these seizures, uh, these, uh, highlights right here are basically shows how, uh, it goes up, it peaks in the summertime or in, yeah, during the summer months, um, it kinda comes down a little bit, but their operation during their time operations, they seize a lot more guns than we do all year round. Um, summertime again is a busy time for us, and so, um, that's why we put this unit out there, uh, proactively during the summertime. And again, we're not waiting for the problems. We actually started them, uh, right before Memorial Day. Um, and they went all the way to Labor Day, and I give you an update as we continue of what we're doing with them now. Um, next slide. Some case high lows, there's three, three highlights. There's three cases that they put together theirself on the street, based through their investigations. Um, one dealt with firearms, illegal drugs, or two of them dealt with firearms, illegal drugs, and the other one dealt with illegal firearms. Next slide. Um, the first one was, uh, our desk officer received a complaint about a felon possession case. Um, that was passed on to our crime suppression unit. They hit the streets, investigated. They end up serving a search warrant and arrested the suspect for various offenses, including dealing and controlled substances. The next one is, uh, received a tip from LaPorte Police Department Officer reference a vehicle um, that was laid to the sale of narcotics. Our crime suppression unit team sought that vehicle out, um, stopped the vehicle and made an arrest for multiple offenses, including dealing methamphetamine. And the last highlighted case is, uh, initiated after seeing a trend in shooting complaints um, in residents in Michigan City. Uh, social media was utilized as an investigative tool along with our technology, and it resulted in two handguns, one rifle, one frame recovered from a residence where some of that shooting was happening. Um, this talks about the impact. Um, if you can go to the next slide as I talk about it. Impact of number reports rose from 441% from 2018 to 2022 during the summer months and 447% from January to September. This is the, this is for the summer months. This slide, yes, from Memorial Day to Labor Day, as you can see the rise, and then you can see the decrease from 2022 to 2024 of 76% decrease, um, from the summer months. Um, next slide. That's it? That's all the slides you had? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm missing one more. The other graph, the one graph that's missing, I'm sorry, I must have got deleted. That one? I don't even have it now. If you can go to the next slide. And so the impact of that was the number reports had decreased to a five-year low, um, from January of this year to September of this year. Um, and besides crime suppression unit, um, also their proactive activities also has pushed our shift to do some things. These guys and girls come out and help the shift units who now are also out there doing the same thing as they're still responding to their calls for service. Um, as you can see, this last slide is basically, it shows the totals that they've, uh, uh, accumulated during their operations, 40 felony arrests, 62 total arrests, 28 firearms, 144.8 grams of methamphetamine, and 709.2 grams of control substance with $73,000 confiscated, um, throughout their time. Next slide. Again, the results here are made, these results are based on a crime suppression unit and going out hitting the streets hard and effectively working to get, working well with not only our LaPorte County Drug Task Force, but also the men and women on during the shift level. And also, um, the great thing about them is that they took a lot of investigations also off of our, our detective bureau. Um, they're out there. If it happens, sometimes they don't even call the detective bureau up. They kinda spearhead them. And that also helps us with overtime and manpower, um, of people not being tired from coming out at night or during the weekend. So, um, I just wanted to give you a review of them. Uh, the crime suppression unit is still in effect. What we have done is kinda made them part of our, um, for the winter months, part of our LaPorte County Drug Task Force. We, they've kinda succumbed them a little bit and/or encompassed them and brought them in and will they will get some training and they'll also, um, start working different type of angles on cases so that when the summer months come back around, they could be better prepared and, um, actually have some more intel on the streets. So so I wanted to give that report of, of them because they are a big part of some of our operations lately that has allowed us to see these, uh, lower, uh, violent crime trends.
Thank you, Chief Corley. Are there any comments or questions from the council? Councilman.
I, I I get pistols and rifles. What's a frame?
Uh, just a frame, the gun like your, I guess, showing your hand, the hand, I'm not a gun guy like that, but just a frame without the actual slide. So either the slide, the frame is just the part that slide comes off of.
Couldn't shoot, but it looked like it might be.
Yeah, um, a lot of times, you know, you see the, we have these ghost guns, so the guns that are made are their, the parts are interchanged.
Councilwoman Molinar.
Um, Captain Corley, um, the totals that you were showing there were relatively accumulated totals for 2024, or were those annual totals?
No, those are, uh, for 2024, and that was just, what I just showed you up there was just the crime suppression unit. That's not even the whole department. So that's just their, their efforts.
Thank you. Impressive numbers.
Thank you.
Councilman Dabney.
Actually, I turned my light off, but I just wanted to say, hey, I'm, uh, happy to see those numbers decreasing and and the shots fired calls and things like that are decreasing here in Michigan City. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you as well, Chief Corley, and for your presentation.
And I just have one more announcement. Uh, this month or, yeah, October, we are starting our, uh, Michigan City, uh, Citizens of Police Academy. We have approximately 32 participants signed up, and we have seven sponsors reference food. So we're looking forward to, uh, again, promoting what the men and women of the police department do to our community, getting some more allies and just better understanding of what we battle every day, um, on the job, outside what you see in these reports and on the news. So, um, we will give a report reference, uh, that, um, academy once we're finished.
And you said when?
So we start, I'm sorry, I should have said that. Uh, we start in, uh, October the 10th, and we go into November 21st. It's every Thursday except for the Thursday of Halloween. It's Wednesday for seven weeks.
Thank you, Chief.
Yep. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Lynn Wall, the City Controller of the City of Michigan City. I would just like to report that the financial audit report of the City of Michigan City, January 1, 2023 to December 31st, 2023, has been released and filed by the State Board of Accounts. This report can be viewed from the State Board of Accounts website at in.gov backslash SBOA. If you click on the search reports and search for the City of Michigan City Audit Year 2023, you can see our audit report and all the other audit reports if you wanna search for the entire state of Indiana. Um, the federal financial audit report contains a statement of receipts and dispersments which can, which reports the cash and investment beginning balances, receipts, dispersments, and ending cash and investments fa- um, following uh, can, ending cash and investments. This statement includes 119 funds covering the City of Michigan City, the Sanitary District of Michigan City, the Port Authority, Redevelopment Authority, and Water Department. They're all combined. And so the State Board of Accounts published the following opinion on our audit. In our opinion, the accompanying financial statements referred to above presents fairly in all material respects the respective financial position and results of operations of the city as of and for the year ended December 31st, 2023, in accordance with the financial reporting provisions of the Indiana State Board of Accounts. In other words, we had no findings on the financial audit. The second report is the federal compliance audit. This report contains the statement of federal awards. These are federally funded grants. There, there were process findings, and I have provided corrective action plans for each. The corrective action plans are included in the published report. The corrective action plans included, for all vendors paying over 25,000 that are federally funded, the city must verify the vendor is not on the suspension or department list. None of our vendors paid were on this list. However, we did not verify this before payment. We also must provide proof of verification. The corrective action plan was submitted, and there are now policies and controls in place. Also, each federal award has varying reporting and period of performance requirements. Not only do reports need to be submitted, and they were, another individual needs to review the report and document that a review has been done. This was not consistently done in 2023. The corrective action plan was submitted and is included in the report, and there are now policies and controls in place. Any questions?
No, no, no questions, but I'm glad to hear that there were no, uh, findings or deficiencies. So I appreciate your work.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, council, council, um, chair, vice president, and clerk's office. A couple of things. So first, uh, this past weekend, we had the West Fest on the west side, and, um, that was a part of our vibrant Michigan City playbook, and um, I would like to thank all of the folks that supported that, um, program this weekend, all of the um, organizations that participated. Also, a shout out to the Vector, um, department. They did a a phenomenal job in helping to clean that up. The mural is beautiful, um, and we will continue to do those um, projects as we move along. And, um, thank you to our controller's office for the audit. Um, I know uh, they were here for, it felt like forever, especially my first, first, uh, year, but it seemed like they never left. Um, but, um, again, um, clean report, uh, just work on some internal controls. And then, um, also Chief Corley with, uh, thank you for that presentation today and giving that update um, as well. So I'm gonna read, um, I know I'm gonna do a presentation during the public hearing for um, the budget, but I'm gonna read the, the letter that was in your budget book for the record um, so that, um, it could be, um, on record. Dear council members, and closes the 2025 budget, the administration's goal this year was to focus on building trust, transparency, and accountability through workshops, staff meetings, and reports at the common council meetings on our financial health. This budget is based on historical trends and support from Baker Tilly. I know that 2025 will be a tight and conservative budget. Here are some of the findings that were identified this year that impact the budget. Um, previous administration, we had an over projection of revenues, um, expenses, number two expenses were you, uh, utilized all projected revenues and some cash balances. Raises to employees over the national projected, um, average, um, from last year, 3.5 to 3.9% was the national average. Um, this year, um, police had 13% increase fire, well, minimum of 13%, fire minimum of 12%. Employees receive 6%. We also increased, um, longevity pay um, last year, and then, uh, as I've stated previously, some Michigan City, the sanitary district, some inefficiencies that were identified. Um, I am confident in the budget we are presenting. Our projected revenues are $66,753,857 compared to $70,457,858 um, in the 2024 budget. Our expenses this year are approximately $67,237,198 compared to um, $73,359,374, um, in the 2024 budget. So that's about a $6 million, um, decrease um, from, from last year. So this is a significant reduction. Um, while adjusting, adjusting for increased costs, I met with department heads and evaluated every fund based on historical data trends and year-to-date spending. And here are a few highlights. Um, healthcare costs per employee will go up from $19,000 to $21,000 per employee. Um, there was a reduction in overtime, supply lines, and underutilized expense categories, um, with the higher scrutiny. Capital spending focused on utilizing department budgets and non-reverting funds versus going directly to the Riverboat Fund. And this year, um, we would like to offer a one-time mid-year bonus payment of $1,200 from the rainy day fund. I am optimistic and know that we are taking the proper steps to make sure we create a roadmap to become efficient in our budgeting process and overall city services for our residents, employees, and businesses. Uh, Controller's Office has stepped up in a big way, and I'm thankful for the tenacity they have shown this year. And I've, I've stated previously, you know, the weekends that they have been working, pretty much almost every weekend, um, but also in supporting the sanitary district. The common council's partnership with the appropriation of, um, ARPA, American Rescue Plan dollars, has allowed us to save some money, but will also allow us to inject money into the community. I would like to list a few areas or opportunities that will be forthcoming. Um, and I think it's on the agenda this evening. Um, we have our fee consolidation and, um, fee increases through the Baker Tilly analysis and recommendations. Uh, we've had a couple workshops around fees, um, and the analysis that we presented to the public. Um, we've also implemented some technology in planning and central services. We're in the midst of all of the beta testing for our permit, um, platform. Our refuse ordinances focused on dumping and special pickups. We had a workshop on that as well. Proposal of a will tax to continue our increased improvements for streets and sidewalks. As you know, partner dust, we're doing a lot of streets and sidewalks. And then, um, eventually a proposal to move, uh, funding from their revol- uh, from their revolving loan fund back to the Boyd Development Fund, which we know, um, has been reduced significantly over the last several years. I will continue to work on educating the council, our employees, and the public on our finances and processes within the city. It's a journey, and I'm up to the challenge. With your partnership, I know that we are headed in the right direction. Although no pay increases in the 2025 budget, we are committed to creating value and opportunities for employees into the future. Um, this is a tight year, and we know that. Um, thank you for your leadership, and of course, if you have any questions or concern about the budget, you've all reached out whenever you needed to. So, um, and then I will do a presentation during the public hearing. So those are my comments. Any questions for me?
There are none.
Uh, so with, with, goodness gracious, West Fest was part of the, the vibrant Michigan City plan. So, um, this weekend, we also had the Eastport Block Party, and then I know that there's a neighborhood party coming up in Midtown. Um, is it possible for those to receive vibrant Michigan City support in the future?
You can ask. Um, we, we do have a dedicated resource that the council, um, approved, Aaron Meisner. So, um, Ezzy Redwood is our ERC fellow, and Aaron Meisner, um, is paid for through ARPA dollars. So I don't see why not. Um, I think we just have to reach out.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Mayor Angie. Moving along, we will now, Madam Clerk, are there any petitions?
There are no petitions.
Madam Clerk, are there any communications?
Correspondence was received on September 20th from the City Controller regarding the balance in the promised scholarship.
Madam Clerk? First resolution?
A resolution by title only approving reduction. A resolution by title only approving reduction of certain appropriations in the budget of the cumulative capital improvement fund. And this is introduced by Ms. Tillman.
And this is in regards to certain appropriations for the budget year of two thousand and twenty-four for the cumulative capital improvements funds now have unobligated balances that will not be needed for the purpose for which appropriated. It is further resolved that the following appropriations be reduced, which will decrease the cumulative capital improvement fund number four, four, zero, one, supplies of forty thousand dollars. Are there any public comments in regards to this resolution? Are there any public comments regarding this resolution? Are there any public comments regarding this resolution? There are none? Are there any council comments regarding this resolution?
Motion to approve support.
There's been a motion by Councilman Dabney and second by Mr. Be- Beatrix. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Mullenauer?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
And Mr. Beatrix?
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next resolution?
A resolution by title only approving the reduction of certain appropriations in the budget of the aviation fund. And this is also introduced by Ms. Tillman.
And this is in regards to the de-obligation, just making adjustments of the previous incurred obligations budgeted in the two thousand and twenty-four, which the amount is for thirty-six thousand dollars, and it will go back into the aviation fund for the year of two thousand and twenty-four. Are there any public comments regarding this resolution?
Hi, Tommy Clavich, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I'd like for Mrs. Jessica Ward and people at the airport to come here and give us an update on what's going on at the airport. I know they came here a couple of years ago. I know we approved hundreds of thousands of ARPA funds, they get the new above-ground fuel tanks in there. And I know in two thousand and seventeen, I remember, this is one of the last items that Al Willo voted on when he was still alive, about the runway expansion there, supposed to, so we can start landing their jets out there. I just wanted to come here and find out what's going on at the airport. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comment? There are none? Comments by the council? Mrs. Mullenauer?
Vice President Tillman, I would like to be added as a sponsor to this resolution, please. I want to assure the residents of Michigan City that this transfer does not affect the overall budget. The money is there, and this is just moving funds from one account to another. I've asked to be added as a sponsor because I am the city council liaison to the airport authority. And also, the airport does lie within Ward Six, which is my designated ward. So thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, on the vote, please.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Mullenauer?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Beatrix?
Aye.
And Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
Madam Clerk, ordinances on first reading?
An ordinance on first reading by title only amending various sections in Division One, Generally, and Two, Manipulately Municipal Collection and Disposal Service and Article Six, Solid Waste in Chapter Ninety-eight of the Michigan City Municipal Code, and creating Section Fifty dash five oh nine of Section Fifty dash five one oh, and Article Twenty-five Utilities in Chapter Fifty of the Michigan City Municipal Code regarding solid waste garbage. And this is introduced by Mr. Don Peres Maluski, Dr. Cora, Mr. Coulter, Mr. Beatrix, Ms. Lee, and Mr. Dabney.
Would any of the sponsors like to comment? There are none? Are there any comments from the public?
Oh, yes, Tommy Clavich, real quick. I know we're talking about the garbage and the fees and the illegal dumping. I think one thing that goes hand in hand with illegal dumping is the vacant structures. I was actually at the county, La Porte County Council, and I read the statute that I've read to many of the previous councils before. Next time we have a full council, I'm going to read that during my public comment time. Thank you.
Good evening. Sal Dunlap, seven twenty-nine East Michigan Boulevard. Garbage is not really a common topic in our homes. Once that item, whatever it might be, is out of the hands of the homeowner, they could care less where it really goes. They have no understanding of how critical a system like this must be in place to address something that can drag us down much further than we need to be. It all ties in with this vibrant conversation. We got to make sure that we get this garbage thing right. It's going to require a lot of education on the part of those of you in power to make sure that the word really gets out. Our recycling effort must be much, much more than what it is right now. We can take that lead for the whole Midwest. Chicago has only got one person running the recycling program. Name is Suave. Been there for several years. That's just how serious they are about doing something about recycling. Well, we have somebody at the top that can issue directions and timeframes to make sure that our recycling program becomes what it's capable of being. I'll be back up a little later to talk about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunlap.
Hello, Board. Scott Melantour at Kenwood Place. I have read the proposed ordinance and the change in statute, and I actually think there are some, for lack of a better word, mistakes that we need to take a look at. And I would actually encourage you to table this and put more thought into this. To start with, Section Ninety-eight, one, one, five, right of entry states, "Any city department shall have full power and authority to enter into or upon any street, lot, alley, or ground, whether private or public, for the purpose of making a sanitary survey of it at any time." That is unconstitutional. The state may not enter a property. Private property is private. The Fourth Amendment extends to something called the curtilage, which is the area about your house. And in the city lot, that's effectively the whole city lot, the front yard, the backyard. City employees, members of the state, have the same right as a Girl Scout to knock on your front door, ring the bell, not to go on and about my property, anybody's property, to inspect it. I think that's unconstitutional. I think that's a real problem. Section Ninety-eight, one, four, two, Section E, subsection two, is where we grandfather a second cart. We're going to start charging for second carts, which I endorse. Who's going to monitor property transfers to know when a property with a second cart has changed ownership? If you're going to charge for second carts, just start doing it. Have a turn in a month where people can turn their second carts over upside down with the curb, and they can be picked up. Maybe we'll have less garbage out of that. But if you're going to do it, implement it all January first, two thousand and twenty-five. Section Ninety-eight, one, four, five, landlord-tenant. Garbage is garbage. You can't treat different classes of people differently. That's also unconstitutional. And I know we're trying to get a handle on this, but I think some of these things violate the law and aren't the right way to go about it. Yard waste, Section Ninety-eight, one, four, six. Yard waste needs to be bagged and placed into a can. And every address will be only allowed one thirty-two gallon can. Well, in my neighborhood, we have half-acre lots that are heavily foliate, foliated. My neighbor who bags his grass uses three cans a week. Now, I mulch my grass, and I do my best not to have garbage. I have a compost heap. Have you ever tried to trim a bush or a small tree and fit that stuff into a bag? I mean, this is redundant. If it's going into a thirty-two pound tote or this getting, or thirty-two gallon plastic bin that's getting tossed, two, one is certainly not enough. I would suggest two as an amount. You're also forcing people to get dumpsters in many cases. And in another section, the fee schedule, we have a fee for getting dumpster. So now I'm going to charge them for dumpsters. I'm almost done. This is important because there's been no chance for public comment on these things.
Sir.
I'm going to, I'm going to submit.
Excuse me, but your three minutes are up, but you can't.
This isn't subject to three minutes. This isn't public comment. I'm speaking about proposed ordinances.
Excuse me, horn of order, I'm going to ask if you could, they're all for three minutes, and if you could bring it back up under public comments at the end, so that it can be heard.
A house on Washington Street, I may not be here for that. This meeting is going to go along. A house on Washington Street.
Excuse me.
Has recently granted.
Excuse me.
A third, a permit for a third dwelling unit.
I'm asking you to please sit down. Thank you.
You don't enforce that with anybody else. Nobody.
This is my first time, sir, sitting here as the Vice President.
Dennis Hirsch, two, ten Kenwood Place. I haven't read the entire ordinance. I've read enough of it. A lot of what you're doing in this ordinance will create the opposite effect of what you're looking for. If you restrict the containers to one, whether you require a bag and a container, which I think is absolutely ridiculous, what you're going to do is get people to do that illegal dumping that you don't want or to put the yard waste in their garbage container. The amount of yard waste doesn't change just because you've changed the ordinance. When you talked about trimming, when I started trimming my yard towards the end of the summer, bushes, trees, all sorts of things, without the grass, my grass is also mulched. I found I've got three of those containers. The three were full. I had piles of stuff on my property that I left alone and didn't do the rest of the trimming because I had to wait until those got emptied until I filled the next three. When you start restricting and forcing people to get dumpsters to get rid of larger items on a regular basis, you are encouraging them, if they don't have the money or don't feel like paying the extra fees, to find a place somewhere around the city to just dump it. If you want to do something that helps get rid of that waste, pick a couple of central locations and let the city put dumpsters in. You don't have to pick it up. People can dump those large items in those dumpsters at decent locations. There's a lot with this ordinance that is not good, and a lot of it that's going to create exactly the opposite result that you're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the council? Madam Mayor?
Good evening again, Mayor Angie Nelson-Dight, one twenty-six Lady Lane. Couple of things. I think it's good to express the concerns that they're bringing up. I will say that multiple ordinances were looked at from different municipalities as well. We also had our intern, one of our interns, go through and evaluate and look through ordinances from other municipalities. We're not saying this is perfect, but we have to start somewhere. And we are looking at a dumpster program that we will be putting dumpsters out in central locations. One of the things that I do want to address, though, is that workman's comp claims, FMLA, and different things that occur within our department because of the work. It's a grind. It's a grind for our employees. We have a high turnover in that department. And we're not trying to do anything different than what other cities are doing. We're trying to figure out how do we create a baseline for how we deal with trash, refuse, recycling. And we are looking at a dumpster program. Chris Yagelski has put together a plan for that. I've had an initial meeting with IDIM to talk to them about some funding mechanisms to help us with that as well. So we're not taking it lightly. And I do recommend, if we need to do that, I don't, I don't see tabling. It's off, this is first reading?
Yes.
Okay, I think maybe another workshop with people being able to bring their concerns. I think that's feasible. I'm willing to do that. It's no problem. We've done a couple already. But I think it's important enough to do it again. I have no problem with that. So I'm open for that. But we took language from other municipalities. This is not something that we take lightly. We just had a situation where someone cut up a huge tree on the private property and expected us to pick it up, right? And so I just think that unlike other cities, we tend to do a lot of things for free, and our tax dollars are not covering the cost to do business. And that's why these things are coming up now. Because our general fund, we get about twenty-nine million, but our budget is sixty-six million, right? So I just want to make sure that you all understand the position and the predicament that our employees are in and that our administration is in when it comes to providing services. So I recommend putting, you know, together another workshop, and we'll just go back through it again. I have no problem with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any comments by the council?
I just want to address the redundancy issue that was brought up by Mr. Hirsch. On the face of it, I agreed about this a month ago or so. We had the workshop. But then last Wednesday was my day to put stuff out for them to pick up. And I had them in a bag. And two days prior to the day for me to take them out, we had a flash flood, a lot of rain. It settled underneath that paper bag. And when I picked it up to take it out to the street, it just fell through, and it was all over my garage. And I had to get another bag out and fill it up again and then take it back out. So the thirty-two gallon drum is there so that you can put the bag into it as soon as you fill it. And then if it gets wet, you can put it out on the street that day. If it gets wet, they can just pick up the thirty-two gallon ton and throw the bag in. And we don't have the issue of all the garbage sitting in my garage or by the street. So it sounds redundant, but it really isn't. And I agree with the mayor, and we can have another workshop. I'm fine with that. The issues of constitutionality, that can be dealt with, I think, by the attorneys.
I think that's true. Just if I could.
Yes.
Madam President, just on the issue of the constitutionality, the Fourth Amendment is a concern in this context. But what the Fourth Amendment guards against is unreasonable searches and seizures. And here, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about the government entering property in order to ensure compliance with a statute or local ordinance. And there's a difference there. It does not automatically constitute a violation of the Fourth Amendment, building inspectors entering your property for the purpose of inspection, obviously for emergency purposes, but also to inspect utilities. So it's all a matter of reasonability. Fourth Amendment should be recognized and protected. You don't just barge into someone's property unnecessarily or just to undertake a fishing expedition. But I think that's something that we'll make sure before this is adopted and final, that we respect the Fourth Amendment.
Thank you, Attorney Harris. Are there any other comments by the council? Dr. Cora?
Yeah, Madam President, you know, in light of some of the concerns that have been expressed, I think it's a good idea to have the workshops. So I think we, before we adopt this ordinance, I think we need to. So I think we, we, uh, before we, um, adopt this ordinance, I think we need to schedule. Uh, a workshop, uh, address some of those concerns. Uh, about the fourth amendment and about some of the other technicalities, uh, about collecting. And obviously this needs to be done, but I think probably this needs to be tweaked a little bit. So I think a workshop will enable us to do that.
Thank you, Dr. Cora. Councilman Dabney?
Now, after the, the, the meeting here, I would like you to come up and point to where you said things were unconstitutional. Cause I would love to give those to our, our lawyers before we get into the next, uh, workshop. Where that doesn't get emptied out there and then we're pushed back more weeks where we get a chance to, you know, a, address those concerns ahead of time. So I'm gonna stay afterward and you, I'll highlight where exactly you say that it's unconstitutional, so we can take care of that. But I appreciate this moving forward, um, to try to really clean up this city. I've been seeing this for a long time and I am so happy to see us moving forward with this. Um, in terms of addressing this trash, I know it, it's, it's time. That's all I'm gonna say. It is time for us to do this. Uh, if it takes us baby steps with another, um. Workshop, which I love, um, we, maybe we need to do it.
Thank you, Madam Councilman Dabney. This ordinance on first reading will be, um, go over to second reading. Madam Clerk, on first reading.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, creating section fifty dash five two two and article twenty-six vegetation of chapter fifty. Fees and fines and creating section one oh two dash fifty-four in article two, trees, shrubs and other plants of chapter. One oh two vegetation of Michigan City Municipal Code. To establish a tree removal permit and fee. And this is introduced by Dr. Cora, Mr. Coulter and Ms. Lee.
Are there any comments by the sponsors?
Madam President, I, I would, uh, suggest that, uh, the, uh, the city forester, Mr. Wolf is here. Maybe he can come up and quickly summarize, uh, what this is about. I think that'll help everybody.
Michael Wolf, City Forester. This was put together in response to trying to solve a lot of small problems that we have. By putting together a permit. Uh, we have a lot of people coming into town, cutting trees illegally. They're not. If you're gonna cut trees for hire in Michigan City, you need to come in and be registered as an approved. Arborist. Um, we then make sure that they have, um. Liability insurance, workman's comp, and they knew all the rules for cutting trees in the city. And consequently, we have a lot of people coming into town. Who I like to refer to as the slash and dash guys. They come in, they make a quick buck. They cut a tree, they get done, they throw it over the fence into the alley. There's no cleanup, there's no work, and they leave with their check. Consequently, the city has to go behind. And we have to pick up and deal with disposal of all the wood. Uh, the permit process creates. A, uh, system where A, the people, if you hire somebody to, to tree work. They have to come in and get a permit from us. The tree cutter has to get a permit. That way it gives us an opportunity to verify that they do have a, a license and are authorized to operate in the city. Also, part of that permit is disposition of wood. Where, what do you plan to do with the, the wood? Where are you taking it? What are you gonna do with it? That way, again, to avoid the problems of going behind them and cleaning up the messes. The permit also has them, has them to, the individual needs to make out a plan. Of what they're going to do and submit that. I'm trying to avoid people cutting trees off their neighbor's property because they don't like the neighbor's tree. They'll hire somebody, say, hey, cut that tree down. They don't care. They just go cut it down. Then I have a, a dispute over, can they do that? Should they do that? Uh, the fee is nominal. The, uh, the fee is not intended to stop anything. The fee is just to cover the cost, to help cover the cost of the city. Because after they get done doing their job, I intend to go back out and make sure that they did it properly. And meet our system of, did they grind the stump? Did they make proper cuts? That kind of thing. So.
Thank you. Any other comments by the sponsors, if there are none? Any, anyone from the public wishes to speak? On this ordinance?
Hello, Scott Mellentour, Kenwood Place. I'd just like to point out to the public in case it wasn't clear. Um, again, I understand why we're proposing these things. Um, but we know what they say, the road, uh. The road to somewhere is paved with good intentions. Um, I would just like to point out to the people. That this is a proposed fifty dollar permit fee. Anytime you hire a tree company to do work on your property. I just want that to be clearly out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the public wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the council wishes to speak on this ordinance? Councilwoman Nancy Moldenhour?
Um, I would like to, um, request to be added to this ordinance, please.
Councilman Beatry?
I, I think I need to preface by saying I have a lot of respect for Mike Wolf, our, our forester. Uh, I had some concerns at our workshop that we had on this. And I thought about it a while and I still have them, those concerns. Uh, one of them is the fifty dollar permit because. That's just gonna be transferred on to the homeowner as another fee. Fifty dollars is more than what they would have spent. Um, but in principle, I don't mind that fee as much as I mind. Uh, that part of the ordinance that requires a submission of a site plan. Um, marking the tree to be designated for removal, the property lines, the sidewalks, the buildings, the structures. And a photo, a photo of the tree and a debris or a disposition plan. I don't know of all these fly-by-night groups that are coming into Michigan City. I haven't seen them. I, I've had. Trees removed, but I've done it with local guys, family-owned businesses. And, uh, they've all done a great job. And I just think it's, my feeling is it's overkill. To ask these guys to fall, jump through all these bureaucratic steps. That involve all this detail just to cut down a tree in my backyard. Um, I guess I'm not as bother, bothered by the permit fee. Because with that, that allows Mike Wolf and I to go out and look at it at least. But all this other stuff that we're asking these, uh, local businesses to now do, just seems like overkill to me. And, uh, I, I'd be more comfortable if we deleted that, but just kept the fee.
Thank you. Mr. Beatry, are there any other comments by the council?
Uh, Mike, this is what, Mike Wolf, City Cup, or City Forester, in regards to the. I might have to agree that it might be a little bit on the overkill. I would at the minimum though, if that's, if some of that's gonna be cut out. I would at least like to make sure that the, uh, person is gonna cut down the tree. Take a picture of the work beforehand. Um, that way we can make sure that, A, they cut down what they say they're gonna cut down. And B, if they do any damage to surrounding property, for instance, they cut down a tree and take out your neighbor's fence. They need to be held responsible for that. And that picture would then show me that, hey. This tree was there, the fence was there, now the tree's gone, but unfortunately so is the fence. So if we cut that back, I would want to make sure that at least. The picture pu, portion of that stays in, cause that would help me, um. Get restitution, if you will, in some of those cases.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. This ordinance will, on first reading, will be held over to second reading. Madam Clerk, ordinance on first reading.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, amending the fees slash fines with various chapters and sections. Of the Michigan City Municipal Code. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney and Mr. Beatry.
Are there any comments by the sponsors?
Uh, yes. Well, what we're doing here is just, uh, consolidating some fees and, you know, we're actually taking away some fees that were never used. Basically making it more efficient, uh, for our departments to be able to operate. Uh, make things easier to understand moving forward. And, um, while I'm talking about that, I want to make a motion for a, uh. Amendment by substitution. It is here in front of you. Uh, this was sent out to different departments to look this over and make some changes on it. And some of them didn't get in there in time. Uh, since we're on first reading, it's just a simple paragraph. Uh, here with a, a couple of things here, just some, some clarification that was brought in by, uh, Skylar York and, um, Sue Downs. So I would like to make that motion to have an amendment by substitution to, uh, change their. Uh, section of the, the agreement.
Is there a second? Motion by Councilman Dabney, second by Mr. Coulter. Was, was that you, Mr. Coulter or Mr. Dr. Cora, Dr. Cora? Madam Clerk, on the vote, please.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Moldenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
And I'm, I'm sorry, can I make this a quick, I know it's been, the vote's been taken, but I just wanted to say that, uh. They would be at, they had a meeting. They weren't able to make it to this meeting, but they will show for the second reading. If they want to explain, if we need explanation of this small section here, but they'll be able to take care of that. And I see no reason to have to call a new workshop for this, uh, because we're on first reading and it's moving to second reading. There's no need for a workshop for a paragraph.
Are there any, with the public wish to make any comments on this ordinance? With the public?
Hello, Scott Mellentour in Kenwood Place. Um, I would ask if it's possible to read that simple paragraph, given it's the building department. You know, because if we go to second reading, we can also have third reading the same night. It's possible that in two weeks, that everything we're talking about tonight could be made into ordinance. If it's a simple paragraph, it'd be kind of good to hear what they're proposing. Two, on a second note, I didn't see it in the Baker Tilly study, but the mayor mentioned it tonight in the letter she read. About a proposed wheel tax. I don't know if that's part of this or not. It's, it's not. And I don't know how far we've gotten on that, but I'd be interested in learning more about that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. But a lot of work went into the Baker Tilly. I've reviewed it. It seems practical and, uh, it cleans up a lot of things too. It doesn't just change fees. It takes away a lot of stuff. It's good work.
Are there any other public wish to speak on this ordinance? If there are none, any comments by the council?
I mean, I could read this, uh, into the record. I mean, if, if, uh, the council.
If you would, Councilman Dabney?
All right. This is what they're, we're trying to do. Uh, the changes that Sue and Skylar need to make are as follows. Number one, they want to redo section fifty dash, uh, one thirty-three completely to make it easier to read. And to make sure that we are capturing all permit fees and inspection fees accurately. In the attached amendment, it will now read as follows. Section fifty dash one thirty-three, the fee, fees, as required by section twenty-two dash seventy-seven shall be as follows. A residential, a fee of one hundred dollars is established for a permit or service panel. An additional fee of twenty-five dollars is established for each inspection. B, commercial, a fee of two hundred dollars is established, uh, for a permit per service panel. An additional fee of twenty-five dollars is established for each inspection. C, a fee of forty-five dollars is established for each of the following inspections. Number one, electric sign. Number two, electric baseboard. Number three, electric furnace, furnaces. Number four, heat pumps. And then he also had here for number two in, uh, section fifty dash one thirty-five, uh, the need to make the following changes. Um, seven, remove, they wanted to remove something because it does not, um. Move because do not inspect air conditioning window units. That was in the, they originally removed that. They do not inspect, uh. Window units. Seven, remove the greater than five hundred CFM capacity. From the ventilation and exhaust fans. And ten, add per unit for rooftop units. And like I said, they will be here at the next meeting to explain in detail, uh, exactly, you know, if we need that explanation.
If there are no further comments from the council, this will be held over to second reading. Madam President, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, Madam Clerk. Um, ordinance on second reading posted on Gateway, uh, for public hearing.
An ordinance on second reading by title only, ordinance or resolution for appropriation and tax rates. And this is introduced by Ms. Tillman.
Um, for this ordinance, uh, a resolution for approx, appropriations and tax rates, um. The forms will be provided upon the approval of the twenty twenty-five budget for that to be com. Submitted and completed and submitted. Are there any public comments on this ordinance? On public hearing?
Again, Mayor Angie Nelson Dyche, one twenty-six Lady Lane. And, um, couple of slides that I want to make sure the public is able to see. Um, you can go on to the next slide. As I stated before, what our goals were. Um, this year, we spent more time trying to educate, um, our, uh, department heads, um, sanitary district. The council, myself. Um, we've had numerous workshops this year. Um, about our riverboat on rainy day. We had our ARPA workshop. Um, and then we've had some finance workshops. Um, we have, um. Hired Baker Tilly. They have been very helpful in reviewing our ARPA, um, funds and what we've used them for. Um, but we've also, um, asked them to help us in preparing for the next several years. As far as forecasting, but also reviewing and helping us with this year's budget. Um, and one of the things that, um. You kind of went, oh, thank. Um, we wanted to make sure that we built a budget based on historical trends, not just, uh. Transition, you know, transferring things from the previous year over automatically. Um, this was more about, um, scrutinizing, um, how we've been spending our money, um, as we went through this process. Next slide. So findings, as I stated before, um, in my letter, um, you know. I looked at every line in this budget and, um, like I said, i- is the budget, budget that I am presenting. Because, um, I went in personally into the system and made those changes myself. Um, so, um, I, I believe that I can speak to the budget for any of the departments if you have any questions. Because I made sure that I had that discussion, um, with them. Um, the other thing is cash flow, um, our cash reserves. I want to make sure, you know. You know, what we've, um, been told, we had, uh, Baker Tilly, uh, evaluate our cash reserves for all of our different funds. We have a lot of funds. And, um, the goal is to get them all to twenty-five percent cash reserve. Um, anything below fifteen percent is probably not good. We're, we're hovering between that fifteen and twenty. But my goal during this administration is to get those all to twenty-five percent. I think that's important for us. I think it's important, as I, I've said previously, that, um, we need to wean ourselves off of the riverboat. um funds at some point in time um so that we can do more community projects. And then um the sanitary district, you all know I've spent, I've spent a lot of time at the sanitary district over this past nine months to uh make sure that we get them on track. Soon as we get through this process, we've already started the process for the sanitary district budget as well. Next slide. Um, again, um, we went through a series of of meetings. Um, you know, every, every meeting that I have with the staff, I talk about the budget um in our monthly meetings. I also one-on-one um meetings as well. Um, the financial workshops and again, repetition is everything. So um, that's where we stand. Next, next slide. Highlights, as I stated, um, this year we we want to uh utilize the rainy day fund for a mid-year bonus of twelve hundred dollars for every employee. But we're going to use the rainy day fund, um, not riverboat or the uh general fund. We don't have the money there. But as you can see, we have cut expenses by over six million dollars from last year, what was projected expenses to this year. Um, and we've done that by um cutting overtime and um looking at the different line items like supplies um and some of those items. So I did a comparison for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five and several of the different funds. And you all have this already. Uh, you've received this work, this uh PowerPoint presentation. But we wanted to make sure that um we reached out to Baker Tilly to ask them to help us with realistic projections for revenues. Um, and as you can see, um, our realis- realistic um revenue projection is about sixty-six point seven six million dollars um versus the seventy million that we had for last year. So that's significant in one year. Um, part of that is we overestimated our riverboat funds. As I've shared with you all, our riverboat funds have been declining year over year now. Uh, we're anticipating eight point one million dollars um this year, but we budgeted in our re- uh riverboat that we were going to receive nine point seven million, right? For twenty twenty-four, but we're going to receive about eight point one. So um, I think it's important that um as we move forward, we watch it closely. Um, as I stated earlier this year, we're not just doing transfers from the riverboat unless we need them. Um, I know um prior um uh process was mid-year, we just transfer everything from the riverboat and end of the year. Um, we're only going to transfer the riverboat money as needed. Um, so even if we budgeted, if we're coming in better, we're not going to transfer the money. We're just leaving in the riverboat. Um, so the general fund, um, we're anticipating about twenty-nine point two million dollars uh for uh from the general fund, that's our property taxes. And again, um, you may have seen the headline for the report. Again, we are um, we are definitely uh hindered by, you know, some of the old things that have happened downstate that um we have a tax cap, you know, circuit breaker that we are under. So we received twenty-nine million dollars in general funds. Riverboat, um about eight point one. MVH fund, our MVH fund is um about two point six million dollars. And MVH um changed a couple of years ago, some legislation changed with the state where um before, um, that's what funds our street department as a matter, so that for the public. MVH um is our motor vehicle highway fund. Um, and fifty percent of it is restricted and um fifty percent is unrestricted. Unrestricted can be used for salaries, all of that. Um, but the restricted has to be used for roads. So when we apply for CCMG and road funding, that's what that is for. Um, our public safety let, uh, I don't have that one in here. I have our economic, our old seated fund. Um, that is uh four point seven million dollars. And again, um, we fund a lot of different um departments out of the seated fund. Um, but again, our total budget, um, our revenue um is about sixty-six point seven million. Um, expenses is going to be set sixty-seven million. So we're going to be um about four hundred seventeen thousand dollars um red. But what that means is we're cutting into some cash balances. Those cash balances, and I'll, I'll, I'll speak to that. Um, for instance, refuse. We're going to cut into their cash balance because they're going to get three new C and G trucks. We received a grant, um, so we're going to get two grapple trucks um and another um sidearm that we received through um Drive Clean Indiana um through NERPC. So um their cash balance in that fund is about one point six million. So we're going to go into it about three hundred ninety-six thousand dollars. And you all have those cash balances that I included in your, in your presentation. Um, we also, um, senior center is using some of their funds and their non-reverting fund for a capital project. Um, rainy day fund, employee bonuses um will come out of that. Um, we do have a transfer for uh fire pension. And and then um our social worker this year is going to come out, come out of the opioid funds. Um, before it was just coming out the general fund. This year, we're going to use opioid funds to to support keeping our social worker. I had to call about, um, we had a situation with someone who was um under house recently and she came out and and kind of handled it for us. So she's, she's been phenomenal. Um, the next slide is, um, I took like the top departments and kind of put them into a slide so that you could see how much some of our departments cost. So um, our police department um runs about twelve point five million dollars annually. Our fire department, about eleven point four million. Our park department, four point five million. Uh, refuse about three point six. Street department, two point five, almost two point six million. Um, engineering is one point six million. Planning about one point four. Uh, and then all other departments about twenty-nine million dollars. So um, our, our city, again, uh, we're talking about a sixty se- sixty-seven million dollars in expenses um compared to seventy-three million. But again, um, we'll see what this looks like next year. This is a way for us to to create a baseline of what we can and cannot do. Um, and and then some of the opportunities, if you go to the next slide, that um, you know, before you, we just talked about the fee analysis um from Baker Tilly um and looking at that, um, the implementation of technology, our refuse ordinances. Um, will tax, again, I mentioned it, I did share some information with you all about the will tax. We're one of um very few communi- communities in the northern Indiana that doesn't um have a will tax. And I think it's because we've relied heavily on the riverboat. Um, I just saw a headline from Hammond where um they're proposing a will tax because they're declining revenues of their riverboat funds. So basically, we've just taken riverboat for everything, riverboat, riverboat, riverboat and used it. Um, but what happened when that changed in legislation, all of the other municipalities had to find a way to compete for those CCMG dollars, so they passed the will tax. Um, so um, wasn't quite ready for that. I wanted to get through the budget, but um that will be coming forthcoming um as well for twenty twenty-six though. Um, so when we do bring it, it it will be in effect for twenty twenty-six if it passes. Um, and and then again, the ARP analysis, um, they just sent us uh e- email back um about ARPA. So we're looking for ways to make sure we have all of the projects that we have, where we're at, how much money is left, um, making sure they're in the right buckets so that um after we get through this process, we got to sit down and now talk about what we have left and what we need to do going forward as a backstop uh for next year's budget. So um, if you have any questions for me, I can take them at this time.
Mayor, uh, I don't have any questions, but I want to uh commend you on doing this very difficult work. Cutting six million dollars, uh, almost ten percent of the budget is very difficult. And I appreciate you doing this, but we have to do it to get the fiscal um house in order, so I appreciate you doing that.
Thank you.
Question? Uh, are there any questions from the council? It'll actually really go back to public comment. Are, are there any public comments at this time regarding this ordinance? Are there any public comments regarding this ordinance? Are there any public comments? There are none, council? Are there any public comments regarding this ordinance? Council comment?
Yeah. Yes, and uh, yes, on this ordinance, um, I would like to make the motion that there are no uh amendments that could be turned in on third reading. We got to stay on track, stay on time to get this thing turned in um by the deadlines. And I want to make the motion that there are no uh amendments to the budget uh on third reading.
Support. Madam Clerk on the vote?
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Maldonar?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Beatty?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
And Dr. Core?
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
Motion carries, this will be held over till third reading. Madam Clerk on the next ordinance on second reading?
An ordinance on second reading by title only. An ordinance setting salaries and wages for appointed officials and employees of the city of Michigan City, Indiana for the calendar year two thousand twenty-five. And this is introduced by Ms. Tillman.
I have no comments. Are there any comments from the public on this ordinance? Are there any co- This is in regards to setting the salaries and wages for appointed officials and employees. Last call, any comments from the public regarding this ordinance? There are none? Any comments from the council? There are none, this will be held over until third reading. Madam Clerk on the next ordinance, second reading?
An ordinance on second reading by title only. An ordinance setting the annual salary for the mayor. And this is introduced by Ms. Tillman.
Um, in regards to this ordinance, um, just for the record, um, as requested in our prior council meeting, um, it was requested to read, so I'll reread in regards to the section one regarding the salary for the mayor. The mayor of the city of Michigan City shall be paid an annual salary of ninety-three thousand two hundred eighty dollars. That's three thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars sixty-nine cents bi-weekly from the general fund beginning January first, twenty twenty-five. The general fund is to be reimbursed ten thousand dollars from the sanitary district operating fund and ten thousand dollars from the Department of Water Works to offset the salary of the mayor. Are there any comments for the, by the public regarding this ordinance?
Uh, yes, Tommy Colby, thirteen, six, United States. Mayor Angie already told us nobody from the city is getting raises, elected officials and everybody else. I do want to make a quick announcement though, uh, uh, Mayor Angie, they have um influential women.
Uh, uh, we greatly appreciate that, but we have to stick to the or where we at on the agenda. That'd be under public comment. Thank you.
Hello, Scott Malantour, Kedwood Place. Uh, I was going to second what Tommy said, that I think it's important that everyone uh that the public be aware that there are no salary increases. I think that's, from a taxpayer's perspective, that's good news. And I think you should advertise that. Um, I would also point out in this ordinance and the following one concerning the clerk, uh, the uh city clerk, the language in it says her and she. And I think it needs to be gender neutral in case the next clerk or mayor is a, a male. I just think it's kind of like, uh, in both cases, it says her or she.
It only applies for this year, so unless there's something you have planned for the year, I think it'll.
It has to be, it has to be redone every year? Okay, that was my, that was, that was all. But I think it's great news that the salaries are being held firm. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments by the public? If there are none, any comments by the council regarding this ordinance? Any comments by the council? Any comments by the council? There are none, this will be held over to third reading. Madam Clerk on the next ordinance?
An ordinance on second reading by title only. An ordinance setting the annual salary for the city clerk. And this is also introduced by Ms. Tillman.
Thank you. And again, I will read in regards to section one regarding the annual salary for the city clerk, which states, the city clerk of the city of Michigan City shall be paid an annual salary of seventy-six thousand two hundred fifty-two dollars seventy-three cents. That is two thousand nine hundred thirty-two dollars eighty cents bi-weekly from the general fund beginning January first, twenty twenty-five. The general fund is to be reimbursed one thousand dollars from the sanitary district operating fund to offset the salary of the city clerk. Are there anyone from the public that wish to speak on this ordinance? Are there anyone from the public that wish to speak on this ordinance? Are there anyone from the public that wish to speak on this ordinance? There is none? Is there anyone from the council that wish to speak on this ordinance? Any comments from the council? Any comments? There are none, this will also be held over to third reading. Madam Clerk on the next ordinance, please?
An ordinance on second reading by title only. An ordinance setting the annual salaries for the common council members. And this is also introduced by Ms. Tillman.
Thank you. And again, in regards to this ordinance regarding the salaries for the common council members, I'll read section one, which states each member of the common council of the city of Michigan City shall be paid an annual salary of fifteen thousand four hundred twenty-six dollars sixteen cents, which is five hundred ninety-three dollars thirty-one cents bi-weekly from the general fund beginning January first of twenty twenty-five. Is there anyone from the public that wish to speak on this ordinance? Is there anyone from the public that wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public that wish to speak on this ordinance? There are none? Anyone from the council that wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the council that wishes to speak? Anyone from the council? There are none, this will also be held over to third reading. Madam Clerk on the next ordinance, please? Wait, nope, I'm sorry, that's it. I'm behind myself. Okay. Any new business?
There's no new business.
Madam Clerk on unfinished business?
Nominations, the council has two appointments to the revolving loan incumbents, Pia Parrott and Erica Miller. Term expires October eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. And we have not received any applications.
And would you please read the note as well?
Note, one member, senior level professional loan officer. One member is the business or retail who is a resident of Michigan City.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on, are the, it is now time for comments from the public. Three minutes.
Oh, yes, Tommy Colby, thirteen, six, United Iowa Street. Uh, like I said before, a special announcement, I know the, the uh conference on the influential women in Northwest Indiana had a banquet. Uh, Mayor Angie never took any of us with her, but now Mayor Angie was named the community leader of the year by that, that organization. Congratulations to her. To me, it's kind of a no-brainer, I mean, who else would they really choose? But maybe you're going to come and say, maybe you'll take that next year, Councilwoman Tillman. Um, so I would say county is going to have their tax sale on October sixteenth. They got the list of properties on the SRI website. And I might go, um, they even got Bo Burwalt's house on there at Greenwood and Cal. You might, might there fix that up for a family member, you never know. Um, it's um, this, I know the, the, the park board and then the council and the, the mayor is going to have a, a workshop on October sixteenth on whether to decide whether they're going to, they're going to tear down or they're going to rehab, fix up the, the old, uh, the, the Millining Park fa- fountain. And they, they say that, I read the report, they say about like almost half a million to, to get it restored and operational or maybe like a hundred and eighty thousand just to demolish it and tear it and open up that space for our public gatherings. Like the concerts we have like on, on the weekends during the, when. Or maybe like a hundred and eighty thousand just to demolish it and tear it and open up that space for our public gatherings, like the concerts we have like on, on the weekends during the, when the weather's nice. I really think they need to tear that out and then open that up. I know that, I remember when they put that in in nineteen ninety, that was one of Mayor Sheila Brillson's big crowning achievements. When she was the mayor, uh, 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 it really doesn't have too much in principle value. All we got are really twenty-five years out of it. So that really kind of a big amortization right and depreciation. And, you know, we'll, we'll be in the same boat twenty years later if we fix it up. And, you know, the, the historical value is that was inside of the old Smith Brothers cough drop factory. I, I read on a page that, that, that closed in nineteen fifty-nine. Was demolished in nineteen sixty-six. Now for that to use, the city used that to stockpile their road salt to spread on the roads. And then that's when Mayor Brillson and all them decided to make that into Millennium Plaza. Uh, uh, um, there's one also I'll mention, uh, just say, uh, uh, go rose beat the slicers a week from uh, Friday night for homecoming night in Amesfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Bell Dunlap, seven twenty-nine East Michigan Boulevard. Um. I want to acknowledge the folk who helped over at the Hope Center also. Again. A tremendous job was done. The artwork is gorgeous. It's gonna create a very, very interesting corner. Over there. When we done, hope to get it all completed before winter sets in. There's something spiritual about working in your yard. I've learned that. For your yard to really, really prosper and grow. You got to get the, the dead stuff out. The dead grass, you gotta get that out. You gotta use the right ingredients to assure that weeds know that they're not welcome. And you have to do that so that. What you want to see flourishes. That requires some. Education again. To get our community involved. Back in the early seventies, there was a city in Minnesota, I think it, it might have been Minneapolis. We had a campaign of painting this, the town red. Everybody was giving flower seeds. That grew red flowers. That's a simple project that we also working on to introduce to Michigan City. Again, massaging the interest on the part of our community to get more involved. With controlling what is happening. I mentioned earlier about this vibrant concept. We have first got to clean up and we keep saying that. Two Sundays ago, and I've shared this with you before, the best time to look at a community is early Sunday morning. The winos and what have you, they've gone to bed. The good folks haven't really got up yet. And you can drive real slow, taking a close look at everything. Two weeks ago, I drove Black East Poit. Videotaped quite a bit, drove through the alleys. I invite you to do the same thing. But the same thing is also needed in other areas. A concentrated effort has got to be made. A no tolerance position has got to be taken regardless of what one's social economics might be. There's no excuse for being filthy. I don't care how broke you might be or how rich you might be. You did a great job tonight, little lady.
Thank you, sir. That is closing for comments from the public. Opening comments from the council. Councilman Coulter?
I'd like to make an announcement, uh, to remind people that fall cleanup starts this week, uh, Monday, uh, to be precise. Um, so that. My first reaction to that was that I thought it would be like leaves and things, but it's not. It's large furniture, like mattresses, tires, branches that you might have in your yard. Um, and I'm bringing this up specifically because, uh, Monday garbage route pickups is the first one to go. So that's next week, starting October seventh through the eleventh, all week. Um, and that's a lot of my ward, so Sheridan Beach, Elston Grove. Um, I'm sure other parts of the city are included in that next week. Um, and I also wanted to congratulate Ms. Tillman on a good night.
Thank you. Councilman Beatry?
Um, actually, the fourth ward, which I represent, they start on the fourth. And run it for a week for fall cleanup. So, and again, it, it does include a lot more than just, uh, grass and stuff. Uh, so fourth ward people, get ready. Um, I guess I have a question too. Um, uh. I voted for it. Um, Councilman Dabney, uh, asked that we have no amendments on third reading. And I was puzzled by that, but I voted for it. My municipal code says that you can't have any amendments on fourth reading without unanimous consent. Isn't, isn't that right?
That's correct. On third reading, you mean?
On third reading, I'm sorry, yeah.
That's right.
So. You didn't really, we didn't really need to vote on that because of, because of Dad, they didn't want third, any amendments on third reading. I had to say was no.
Well, we've got belt, a belt and suspenders, right?
We have what?
A belt and suspenders.
Oh, not sure what that means, but, okay.
Um, Dr. Cora?
My president, uh, first of all, congratulations, nice meeting, and I just have one announcement, and that is. Uh, Public Health and Safety Committee meeting will be held on Thursday, October third at five thirty. At the police department's community room, and this is to address the driving and parking, uh. Uh, problems in lawn, on lawns and, um, and walkways and greenways. So, uh, we had one, uh, meeting earlier and we are going to meet again to, um. To finalize some of the recommendations.
Councilman Moldauer?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Um, I know a lot has already been said about the unveiling of the mural at the, um, Hope Community Center. I was actually able to attend that activity. And if you haven't been over there yet, please go over and take a look at both of the murals. Um, the one for Becky Williams is on the front of the building. And the new one, which is creating a visionary future for the, um, west side, is on the back, um, side of the building. Um, this was a project that was actually, um, a part of the, um. I, I'm gonna say thank you to President Don Prispolinski because he's part of the public art committee. And they were one of the partners in that, the Lebesnik Center, the Hope Community Center, our mayor's office. Who, um, allowed vector control to help them with that, um, cleanup over there. And I'm sorry that Mr. Saul Dunlap has already left, but he donated beautiful, large potted mums for the event. And it made it a very festification. So, again, that was a project by all of these groups coming together, and I think it shows what a community is able to accomplish. When we do come and work together. And the artist on this was Doc, was Bernard Williams. And he now has two murals in Michigan City. He has two sculptures in Michigan City, one on Wabash Street. And the other one is at the, um, Westcott Park, which is a celebrated Naomi Anderson sculpture. So make the rounds and just take a look at what he's done to beautify our city. And then, um, I attended the press conference on, um, Monday morning, which was the announcement of, uh, by Mayor Angie. For the launch of the Capitol campaign for the destination and inclusive playground. And I'd seen some drawings of the rendition of what this is gonna look like, but I was really blown away. By actually watching the video, and that's posted on the Parks and Rec Department site, so I encourage you to look at that. They had beautiful, large, um, displays, um, drawings that we were able to witness and see. And again, this has been, um, in the works for a while, and I want to acknowledge, again, President Don Prispolinski. Who's been an initiator of this project. It's not just ADA accessible, it is truly inclusive. It will serve everybody who has whatever impairment they have, whether it be hearing or visual. They're also having a special quiet section for kids that are on the spectra, spectrum that have, um, autistic, have autism. So this is gonna be a first in the whole state of Indiana. So I want our community to be aware of that. And anybody that's capable of contributing to the Capitol campaign, I encourage you to do that. And, um, more of the funding is in the bank than is needed at this point in time, but it's a real monumental, um, take on. I wanna thank Shannon Eason, in addition to, um, our president of the council, Mayor Angie. The Park Recreation Department, and I want to acknowledge, um, Council, um, Man Bryant Dabney. Who is our liaison to the Park Department. This truly is a monumental and significant project for our community. Just one last brief announcement, um, Northwest Indiana Green Lakes is taking, taking place on Thursday. This Thursday, six thirty PM. Um, the title is Nipco Site Reimagined. Um, this is gonna be a presentation by Dane Carlson, who's actually a son of Michigan City. He works at Principia College now. Um, he's a graduate of Harvard. Um, he has worked with the United Nations on environmental projects worldwide. And he's gonna be presenting to us his initial concept plan that he completed as a college student. So I encourage everybody to join us on Thursday. Um, you can do that by going on to Save the Dunes, um, Facebook Live feed. Or you can get a Zoom link to that. And again, you can get that from M. E M stands for Emily at savedunes.org. This is the beginning of what is going to be an ongoing conversation regarding what's gonna happen with that property. When Nipco shuts down and begins their vacating process in twenty twenty-eight. So, everybody, please be there. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Councilman, Madam Moldauer. I would just like to, uh, make one comment, small comment. And that is, if you aren't aware, in regards to the dock workers did file strike overnight. Um, not trying to make anyone panic. Um, but we need to, now will be a good time to start gathering possibly extra things for your households. I mean, if you think about it, if five million and up a day that the poorest is gonna be missing out on, that speaks volume. So we've had a pandemic, now we have supplies and materials. This is probably gonna impose an inflation across the United States and everywhere else, import, exports. We just need to be conscious in regards to this and just try to prepare because we don't know what's forthcoming. We're approaching our, um, general election, so I just wanted to put that, put you all on alert in regards to that. Also, thank you all for bearing with me, um, as I sat in on today. And if there is nothing further, is there a motion to adjourn? Support. Have a good evening, everyone.